Alright, everybody. The February 7th meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later review and output. There are a lot of you in the room right now, which is great to see you all. Just so you know, we have a monitor facing us here that's showing us what you're seeing behind us. If you see us just starting to stare into the ground, that's why we're doing it, because we can actually see the agenda and other documents there pretty clearly. So because many of you we've not seen in this room on a regular basis, I thought I'd like to do a little context setting because I've been receiving all sorts of interesting dispatches that maybe indicate that there's some confusion about how this process works. So I'm going to take a few seconds to talk through that. We get financial updates at nearly every school committee meeting, but by the late fall, we're pretty deep into publicly discussing the creation of the next year's budget. Rockport doesn't fund the school budget at 100 percent. Most towns don't, so by Christmas, the superintendent and his senior administrative staff are examining options to close what is a known predictable and recurring structural deficit. There are several levers that can be pulled to close the gap, with the second-to-last being dipping into our general fund, or reserve as it's often called, and the last being reductions in staff. We take those last two options very seriously and historically have rarely used the last option, which is actually unusual for any district. You tend to see fine-tuning in every other school district related to staff, so we take it very seriously. The budget is complex, with many inflows and outlays that can change over the course of the year, and like all budgets, it's a good-faith estimate created by those with subject-matter expertise specific to running a school district. There are some expenses every year that hit us that are either not foreseeable or beyond reasonable planned accommodation given our resources that often exacerbate our funding gap. We explain the benefits of what we're spending money on, how much we're spending, and what we have to do in the next year to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and improve the experience of students in our school system through public creation and release of our budget. Last year, we introduced a new format for our budget book. It's clear, concise, comprehensive, and it's the end result of many public discussions held in this room. Tonight, the school committee is being publicly presented with this year's version of the budget book and being asked to approve it. And whilst the first time we've seen the formatted presentation in public session, it's not the first time we, or anyone who has sat in or viewed these public meetings, have seen how it addresses the annual budget gap. It's important to stress that this is the end result of many months of buildup and work. Assuming it is approved tonight, it will appear in our website tomorrow in digital format, and over the next day or two will be printed with hard copies provided to the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator, and public copies delivered for onsite hard copy review by the general public at Town Hall and the Public Library, well in advance of the town meeting on April 6th. One additional piece of context setting in terms of process and functional role tonight. The school committee is tasked with oversight and direction-setting for the district through interaction with its direct employee, the superintendent of schools. Oversight does not mean solutioning per se. For example, we might request that the superintendent look into the feasibility of more STEM programming, and he or she might come to us with recommendations and options created in concert with subject-matter experts, and we might approve funding for such a program based on accepting his rationale for purchasing it, but we are prescribed from defining the program, the staffing, or the selection of materials with him. That's an important distinction, because it reserves the expertise in educational administration to those who have long experience in it. Functionally, it prevents inappropriate meddling by school committee members that would likely be informed by opinion rather than school district administrative expertise. So in practice, you'll see us questioning the superintendent on the rationale of his decisions, and in extreme cases, acting as a court of last resort for those with concerns they believe are unaddressed, as oversight committees do, to ensure compliance with state regulations and district goals. For those of us who are here on the superintendent's search committee and school committee during the hiring of our current superintendent, among the top desires we had was to find a candidate who brought a data-driven best-practice perspective to the challenges Rockport Public Schools face while still maintaining the characteristics that make our district such a desirable experience for students. Part of the school committee's charter to Dr. Branco upon being hired was to review Rockport Public Schools from top to bottom, look for areas where we were perhaps not in sync with educational best practices for a district of our size, and move to strengthen and increase offerings for our student population within the context of resource constraints. That's both challenging for a new leader and one of the chief benefits of having a fresh set of eyes survey the existing landscape. For the past few years, Dr. Branco has worked closely with his senior staff to define and implement substantive changes that will improve our district. The budget book about to be reviewed makes hard choices that are consistent with best practices in education and in Massachusetts. These choices have been made collectively and collaboratively and with oversight, with the primary goal of ensuring we meet current student needs and the secondary goal of ensuring that we are viable as a district on an ongoing basis. A final functional note. The role of public comment in a school committee meeting is to inform discussion on matters pending a vote by the school committee to ensure the committee benefits from a full spectrum of thought before voting. That's why in public comment, you speak through the chair, and why on some occasions, a topic that is not part of the agenda may be politely rerouted to a meeting that does contain it. It's different from a public hearing where the goal is to allow anyone to speak at any length. Hopefully, this also explains why tonight, we may opt to respond to an opinion in public comment, or we may decide to simply thank you after your three minutes for your input and move on without comment. And we will move typically, we have the public comments starting out the meeting, we're moving it until after the budget presentation, because I'm sure many of you are here for that. Either way, whether we opt to respond, or whether we thank you for your comment, we always hear you. We take into account what you say, and individually or collectively may agree or disagree with it, but we do take it into account, and ultimately, we vote, having been elected to represent the one constituency that can't legally represent themselves, the student in the system. And that remains our focus in these efforts. So thank you for that level-setting, and I think rather than go through some of the other items in order, why don't we just move to the budget?
So I'll start with the introduction, and we're going to go page by page through the budget, Mr. Chair. Some places, we'll go a little more quickly if it's information-only, and then we'll -- no, sorry. And then we'll slow down in some of the pertinent areas. So that people at home who are watching might not have the same view that we all have here, I will unapologetically read a couple paragraphs. The second and third paragraph, I think, are really important for the public to contextualize. Like all annual budgets, the FY '25 school budget consists of the best projections possible on expenditures and offsets for categories that are both containable and outside of the district's control. For FY '25, the proposed school budget is $16,970,185, with a request for a town appropriation of $14,329,581. This is an increase of 2.7 percent over the town appropriation for last year. And it's really important to note that this proposed school budget represents a very conservative 1.58 percent increase in total growth from last year's budget. So while we are asking for 2.7, and we were very graciously given 2.5 last year, we are down to a 1.58 in total growth, which is pretty difficult to do in public finance. And when we get to brass tacks very soon, we'll see over $1 million in cuts that has allowed us to get to this ask. So I just want to kind of contextualize the ask up front. Important to note that in this budget, the majority of the budgetary increases are the result of a few items. Number one, an increase of 4.69 by the state legislature to approve non-consortium-out-of-district special ed program tuitions. If you recall from last year, the same governing body increased non-consortium-out-of-district special ed tuitions at the tune of 14 percent. So we've had a 14 percent increase last year and a 4.69 percent increase this year. That is a massive increase in out-of-district percentage for tuitions outside of district control. Increases of 14 percent and 8 percent in consortium-out-of-district special education programs, that's our North Shore Educational Consortium, so they've increased tuitions at 14 percent for certain populations of students and 8 percent for other students. Third is the anticipated salary increases due to collective bargaining. And the fourth is inevitable almost every year, it feels like, an increase in the cost of fuel and power. So those major drivers are the ones that contribute to the major increase. This contributed to a projected budget gap of over $780,000, which we have addressed on pages 11 and 12 in the budget book that we will slow down and go through tonight. So I wanted just to contextualize a little bit what the ask is, what the percentage increase is from last year, and the reality that it's a very conservative increase of 1.58 over last year, which is pretty tight when you partner that with $1 million in reductions on a $17 million budget. Community was fantastic during the superintendent entry plan process over the past year and a half, and very proud that the faculty, staff, and leadership team had come together and really helped us develop a brand-new district strategy. So we have a new strategy for district improvement with updated mission and vision and core values. Also led to our strategic objectives, so similar to how we used to run school improvement plans, we now have a district improvement plan with major strategic objectives. So everything we talk about in the budget tonight is directly related to the strategic plan, and will be tied to our professional development planning and our strategic planning for the district. So you'll see evidence of how this moves teaching and learning forward, how it moves student outcome forward, how it makes us competitive from a programming standpoint in a really small district. So I thank faculty, staff, and all the community members that were a big part of all of that work over the past year or year and a half, and we are really proud of the work that came out of this. We remain competitive with a high percentage of students going off to four- and two-year colleges, 10 percent of employment last year, and 10 percent of our students from the class of 23 traveled. We have lots of educational opportunities for travel. We are competitive in middle school and high school sports, with a couple of our -- actually, all of our winter teams currently making the state tournament, which I think is the first time in many years in Rockport. Lots of community service opportunities for our students, over 50 clubs and activities, and competitive coursework in AP and honors and elective courses at our high school. And we currently have a dual enrollment partnership with Salem State as well. So we're really proud of the package we're able to provide on behalf of the taxpayers. I won't go too heavily through the next couple pages. If anybody gets their hands on the budget book off the website soon, you'll see that this basically just sort of highlights the components of our budget, that we have the operating budget and the capital improvement budget. This document focuses solely on the operating budget, and it talks a little bit about the process that the leadership team and I used with a zero-based budgeting development process, which starts from the ground up. It does not assume rollovers, it does not assume anything stays status quo, and it requires us to look at our programming and our staffing patterns and our student needs every single year, and then to redesign the budget from that standpoint. One of the things I would be incredibly remiss if I don't mention is the unique partnership with the technology department that we have in this particular community. The technology department is actually a town department, and they cover the school district as well of all of the other municipality divisions. And we ask for a lot sometimes based on the use of our students, and I'm proud to tell you that Monti and his staff have never said no. They are unbelievable with that budget, they're very careful with deployment of resources, but you can see a very long list on this page of new and updated supports that they've supported the school district with this year. And on the right-hand side, you'll see all the recurring supports that that department comes through with every year. And I know the town benefits greatly from that department in a lot of ways, but it's super-important that I point out that that does not come out of our operating budget, that is a town department, and Monti and his team do fantastic work. I've worked in six school districts, and I've never seen a place where we can -- we really don't want for anything when it comes to me and the technological needs for our kids and teachers. So I'm really proud of that relationship, and thank you to Monti and his team. Oops, sorry. So we've got a little bit of an overview here. So what you're going to see when you see the budget book is you'll see the cheat sheets. So if you are kind of an overview person, these next few pages will kind of farm it out from a height 10,000-foot leverage point. If you're a spreadsheet person, at the back of the book, you'll really see all the spreadsheets laid out, and you can take a deep dive. So we've provided it in both formats, or actually, three formats: narrative, the overview, and then the spreadsheets at the end. So here, you can just see the historical overview from the town appropriations, you can see how Circuit Breaker has played through our budget support, you can see how the school choice has carried through over time, and ultimately, where we fall in applying grants and user fees, and all of those buckets of funding come together to support our budgetary While we are going to talk about some tough decision-making tonight and over $1 million in cuts, I am proud of the fact that the district is able to put together a fiscally responsible and conservative budget that still moves the opportunities for students forward. So this is the list of opportunities for students and positions that we are able to leverage in this year's budget, that we really believe will move the district forward. Last year, we added engineering and computer science classes at the high school, which we did not have, and we were struggling remaining competitive in those areas. I'm happy to tell you that this year's budget supports addition to that project, Lead the Way Programming, so we'll have a second year of engineering courses, and it also supports middle school engineering courses through the same program. So our sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders will have introductory computer science and engineering courses that will set them up for the high school when they get to those programs. And that's a combination of funding between this current budget. The technology department supports us in many ways when it comes to resources there, and then we've already received one grant, and we're chasing a second grant as well to support this program. So really, really happy to continue to move that forward. We've taken a good look at our literacy and math needs, particularly at the middle school for next year and the high school, and so we are able to leverage two positions, and we are going to put in a literacy acceleration specialist and a mathematics acceleration specialist. Those will be regular ed positions to help with our students who are in that lower 7%, 8%, 9%, 10% in meeting benchmark around math and literacy, particularly at the middle and high school level, and really see if we can close that gap that wasn't closed earlier on in their programming. And we believe that that's a real nice value-added. We've identified students that need that, we've taken a good look at our MCAS results and some of our other internal data, and these are two positions that we're really happy to be able to put in place for kids to cover two different subject matters for next year. We've spent a lot of resources, personnel resources, financial resources, and basically through acquisition, have also spent over $100,000 in grant money last year in brand-new literacy programming. So we started brand-new programming last year, and we partnered with a company called Keys to Literacy to support us for three years at the elementary and middle school around our literacy programming in ELA. And one of the things that we have a recommendation to do is to add in an instructional coach at the elementary level. This will be a non-evaluatory union position, it will be someone who can partner with teachers shoulder to shoulder, who can sit in data team meetings, who can work collaboratively with them, and really talk with them and for them about what their needs are in the classroom, do some co-teaching, get in there and do some modeling and some real work and support teachers on a daily basis. This isn't a boots-on-the-ground position that we think is going to actually help us move some work forward at the elementary school, so we're proud of being able to offer We're redefining or redesigning the assistant principal role at the elementary school. So we're going to make a combination position called Assistant Principal and Special Education Facilitator. This will be a split role, which will get us a little bit of leadership, licensed special education leadership at the elementary school, to help us with processes, with meetings, with evaluations, with meeting the needs of students more formally at the building level, so that we just have some more focused special education leadership at that school, and we think that's going to be an important change for us. And it's a combination position, so it's not necessarily an added spot at the elementary school, it's a combo spot. Similar position at the middle high school with a special ed facilitator, not a combination position there because the needs of students are a little different, and so we're going with a full-time position there as a special ed education facilitator. Person will again add some value when it comes to special ed leadership with a professional leadership license to allow us to get some of the work done at the building level that we feel like is not done either as timely as it can be or as efficiently in order to meet the needs of kids. So we think both of these really help us maximize our ability to meet the needs of our special education students. Next position is a position I've talked about early on since I came here. Difficult to run a school district when you don't have someone in charge of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and data. It's a hole that I sort of identified early. This budget does support the addition of a director of teaching and learning, so that there'd be someone at the central office level really managing that work, curriculum mapping, curriculum implementation. We started a curriculum review cycle that we have funded, we'd like to fund it more, quite honestly, moving forward. But it is acceptably funded at this point that we are able to roll curriculum through every couple of years. So we've done one subject, two subject matters, math and ELA, and we're about to move on to science in the very near future, and we just feel like having a point person to move us through all of that work is going to be an important add. So, Mr. Chair, that takes us through the majority of the programmatic and staffing priorities. The next section of the budget book takes us through the reductions. So the first four positions on this list: high school English teacher, elementary special education teacher, world language teacher, and the part-time special ed out-of-district coordinator. Just so that everybody understands this, these were all positions that were vacated after the budget was passed on the town meeting floor. So to be good stewards with truth and lending when it comes to finances, those were not rolled forward, because the district absorbed that work in a unique way this year. So as a result, those do equate to a very large amount of budget reductions, but they're not part of the 750. That is how we get over $1 million in reductions. So when people see this or hear this, they might say, "Well, originally, we said there was a gap of $750,000. Why is there $1 million in cuts?" The gap is there because we took the first four cuts out, the budget was rolled, and then there was over $750,000 still remaining in cuts. So had we rolled them forward, we would have had over $1 million in cuts. So I just, I want to make sure people are clear on the way this is presented. So those first four are reflective of changes that happened after the town meeting passed the budget. The biggest impact on here right now is reduction of four elementary school teachers. The reduction is related to our declining enrollment. As a result of this reduction, we'll now have two teachers in pre-K, which is no change, three teachers in kindergarten, which is no change, two in first grade, two in second grade, two in third grade, two in fourth is no change, because we have that right now, and then two in fifth grade. One of these positions is a result of retirement, the other three positions are reduction in force. At this moment in time, all RES classes are projected to be within the school committee recommended class size. If the rising fourth grade class does increase and go above the recommended class size, which is mathematically possible at this point, then we have already discussed support strategies that we could put in place to try to mitigate that to whatever extent we can. So right now, we believe the projection is it will be right on the cusp of the recommended class size, and again, one or two students moving in and out, or families moving in and out is fluid all the time in this particular district. So today, it's one number, tomorrow, it's a different number. The next reduction is reduction of 1.0 FTE middle high school teacher. This also can be achieved through declining enrollment and the reassignment of remaining staff to pick up the assignments that are being done there. The next reduction is ELL and Spanish combination position. We have a declining number in our L population. We've also, we are looking, and you'll hear this phrase a lot tonight and moving forward, we're looking at regional efficiencies. So I have a meeting, for example, with the superintendent of Gloucester, the superintendent of Manchester Essex, and each of our directors of student services right after February break to talk about things like regionalized special ed transportation, job sharing, can we split positions between districts, are there ways that we can maximize positions to meet the needs of students? This is one of those areas that we might be considering being able to partner with a local school district to make that happen. The other one on here is reduction of 1.0 middle school high school administrative assistant as we've consolidated from two principals to one, and from a two-school, one-building model to a one-school model. Leadership at the high school has identified that as a place where they can make a reduction and still move the school forward. As I spoke about earlier, we're going to restructure the district leadership team. While that is an addition, moving from nine people on the leadership team to 10 bodies on the leadership team, there's actually a financial reduction of $108,000, because there are people in current positions who will go into different positions. So it's still $108,000 in reduction in the admin salary line. Trying to keep it large so everyone can see it. And on the last page, we have a reduction in our COLA reserve, that's just a direct result of having a reduction in force. We have a reduction in our early retirement applications, we had originally budgeted for five applications, and we have one accepted. We had eliminated the Medicaid clerk stipend early on and rolled that into an existing position. We've partially funded the central office administrative assistant with grant funding, and then some small reductions around school and central office supplies, athletic expenses. We're going to fund the anticipated contractual column movement at 60 percent instead of 100 percent. As we look at our historical data, we have many people that ask for column movement because they have to proactively ask for it, and then only a certain percentage of people take it every year. So we know what the historical data is on that, and it's roughly around 60 percent, so we're going to budget for that. We do have some reduction in electricity costs because we put in the new lighting systems in the buildings, and we're going to use a modest $25,000 from the reserve to close the final gap. So that's a total of over $1 million in reductions, $787,000 of it to close the gap. The next couple pages, which I won't dwell on too much, a lot of people are very interested in the student enrollment patterns, in the school choice patterns, students in and out for lots of reasons. So this gives you our current snapshot of enrollment as of the end of January, with a total of 672 students. That does not include 23 out-of-district placements that we are currently supporting This is the historical breakdown of students participating in school choice over time. We're holding strong around 25 percent of our student body coming in as school choice. What makes that a little unique, however, is when we have declining enrollment across the Commonwealth, 25 percent of 1,000 versus 25 percent of 500 is a different number. So we do have less money coming in each year on school choice because the Commonwealth is having declining enrollment. But this will show you the breakdown, for people who are interested in it, of exactly how many students we receive in school choice, how many we send out for our totals, where they're coming from, where they're going to, and then other students who are Rockport students who go through different versions of school, homeschooling, 13 students go to Essex Tech, one goes to TECA, which is the state's online program, and 47 students pre-K to 12 in private school. So if this interests you, this is a pretty good deep dive into our student enrollment patterns over time. Also, right off the DESI website, if anybody's interested, you can see our enrollment, and you can see our select populations around first language speakers, low-income students with disabilities, and students in the high-needs category. 24.2 percent students with disabilities, a little above the state average, but again, as we continue to focus on MTSs and instructional strategies, there is a belief that some students either won't be identified in a similar pattern, or that as students are identified, structures at the middle and high school over time could get a student to have less services as they mature, or no services at all as they age up. So again, this takes you through salaries and wages, historical overview, if anybody is interested in looking at that. A couple interesting things to look at there are, you know, you can see the reductions reflected in the column from 24 to 25. You can see an uptick in buildings and grounds, we already talked about that, with some of the needs, costs in fuel and electricity, and you can see the uptick in transportation, particularly related to special ed transportation. We have a variety of other ways that we fund and support our programs in the district. So we have federal grants that come in every year, Early Childhood Special Education Grant, we receive roughly $8,000 or a little over every year from that. We have the IDEA federal grant that comes in somewhere between $260,000 and $270,000, $280,000 each year. Title I grant funding, Title II grant funding, and Title IV, these are used for either literacy, early literacy, professional development, and a variety of different factors that the budget does not, I'll say, does not need to support, because we are fortunate to have the federal money coming in. We also do chase down a lot of competitive grants each year. We had, I believe, two or three competitive grants in last year's budget that really helped to offset and supplement our work. This year, we already received a $10,000 grant to support Project Lead the Way, the programming at the high school and the middle school, and we're hopefully chasing down one more grant. grant that will help support that program as well. And as many of you know, we are coming off of the federal Corona relief program. So ESER I, ESER II, and ESER III have sort of left the building at this point. And we were very fortunate to make, and I, really, it's tough for me to say we because I wasn't here, the district made really good decisions at the time around ESER funding to not fund full-time, long-term positions. So most of it was one-time expenses and short-term positions that were most likely necessary and theoretically could still be necessary, but at the time, they were advertised and marketed as short-term positions, and the same with purchasing, resource acquisitions for one-time purchases. Many of our peer districts used this money over time, two, three, four years, to gap fill and to hire staff, and they are in big trouble right now. And we see 2, 3, 4, 5 million dollars in cuts in some other districts because they have positions going away that were originally funded with ESER I, II, and III. So proud that the district had done that work and really been smart about how they used those funds over time. Again, a little historical context around our circuit breaker that comes in. You'll see the school choice number in here. It had been combined in the budget prior to me getting here along with the circuit breaker. June and I chose to split that out, again, just to have it be a little more transparent around which dollars are which. And so you can also see the choice direct bill backs that we get when a, when a school choice student comes in and then goes out of district. That's money that we get back 100% in, in, in full from the district where the child lives. Upticks and downticks depending on the year in transportation user fees, and we don't know what the Medicaid reimbursement will come in at, at this time. And then the back pages, as you know from last year, are the deep dives. These are the spreadsheets that will take you through all of the high-level stuff that we just looked at. So if you like to dig into the spreadsheets, they're on the back end of the book. You'll see all the line items, you'll see everything broken out. But I think that's pretty much it that I, that I can present as far as how we get to the first page of the ASK and how the money is. I guess before we get into public comment and the school committee's thoughts on this, nobody goes into education to cut a million dollars. Nobody goes into education to tell people they can't have a job. It's difficult work for everybody in the district. It's difficult work for the community. I believe when I was hired, the charge was to keep the doors open, to be responsible, good steward of the finances in the community, and to make sure that the Rockport Public Schools remains the Rockport Public Schools. And that's the way we're, we're looking at this. At the same time, the difficult charge is to move the school district forward, to provide the students who live here with the highest competitive opportunities in academics, social emotional learning, athletics, fine arts, college career, and service readiness. And I believe that while this is a painful conversation to have, and while it is not a budget that this community is used to seeing, I believe that this work has to be done this way in order to attain those goals.
So I think because the budget book itself is 48 pages, we're not expecting people to absorb much or at all from this presentation. We've been, lived with, living with it for months, but as I said before, we'll be releasing this online tomorrow if approved, and there'll be hard copies in public locations so people can take their time going through it. So I guess the first order of business is, are there, although we've sat with it for a while, are there new questions or any questions or comments coming from the school committee relative to the format that this was presented in?
I have one question. I saw that in the, the full year 25 breakdown with the spreadsheet at the end, that we had a 6.11 reduction in spending for the high school. You know, the high school is one of the most staple, like, population-wise of the three different schools. I'm just wondering why that one had such a large decrease, that due to the retirees, that it happened before the start of the school year, or is that from other costs as well?
Were you looking at salaries or were you looking at expenses?
It's 25.
Thank you. So just a spreadsheet at the end that had a total drop in a percentage from last year.
I think it's that number you see, right?
She said 25.
It's the 6.11.
Thank you. So June, just make sure I'm right on page 25, that, that high overview of the FY25 summary. Some of that is because positions have been moved from one building to another or one line to another?
Yes. Also, when we built the budget, as you explained earlier, the English teacher position and the foreign language position happened after last year's budget was passed, and those positions aren't being filled right now. But then we budget appropriately as it's been proven that the high school is functioning very well without those positions being filled. So you're not going to do it again next year. You're not going to restore those. So then that's why the bulk of the money, the percentage is, is on those two items. The expenses are minimal, if not level-funded.
Other questions from voting members?
I just had a question, or maybe just sort of a discussion point. Long ago, before I was a school committee member, I came to a school committee meeting, and I had heard one of the experienced members say that when you have a question or you're wondering about something, going back to your own policies and looking at them and reviewing them is a good place to start. So I know when we were talking about class sizes and cuts in the elementary school, I went back to look at our suggested class sizes and the ranges. And I know that you had mentioned, and in our policy, it sort of talks about the ability of the administrator, the principal in the elementary school, to have discretion over if they feel like something isn't working. And then what some of the different remedies are listed in the policy. So I heard you say that we, you know, looking as of right now, the classes are, will be within range, but if there's a bubble and a class is out of range, that there will be the ability of the administrators to kind of make that, to have that discussion about what the appropriate solutions are. And that's something that's open, and the money will be there to be able to do that should we need to, should it be decided by our professionals that that's what needs to happen?
So that's two different questions. Yes, yes, decisions will be made if, if we come to consensus that we have to either restaff something or redeploy adults or kids. To comment about whether the money is there or not is different. We're going to basically rearrange the deck chairs, right? So we're going to take the money from one place and put it in another place.
New money does not appear.
Right.
I get that. Yes, yes. But I just wanted to sort of go back to that policy, look at that, and it aligns with what we had talked about for that. But I just wanted to kind of point that out and have that as a, a discussion point.
I have a question about the elementary school. Right, we're talking about combining the assistant principal and the, what is it? Special educator. What does it look like now or previously, please?
Right now, we have a team chair at the elementary and a team chair at the middle high school, which are Unit A positions. And so what this gets us is a licensed administrator in both of those areas, and we believe that we could benefit from having some strong licensed leadership at the, at both levels, just to manage the caseloads, manage the uniqueness of some of our students, the possibility of looking at programs. When we talk, again, talk about regional efficiencies, we might have opportunities to keep some kids in the district who are going out of district right now by partnering with districts and hosting programs within our own buildings, or us having our own program and tuitioning kids in. The issue you have in a small district is you don't always have capacity because special ed students have to be co-horted in a certain way within age brackets and disabilities, et cetera. So we have to look at that very carefully. But as we look at these efficiencies and look at partnering a little bit, it's going, it's going to get us somebody at the building level to kind of help us manage the redeployment of resources or the best way to meet kids' needs down there.
You're saying the building level, like, at the building?
There'll be someone at the elementary and then someone at the middle high school. Yep.
Okay. I was hearing billing level.
No.
I had a question. If you could elaborate a little bit more with some of the staffing additions, specifically with the, the elementary school instructional coach, and then in the, the special education facilitators, and then the director of teaching and learning. So you went through and you kind of explained each of those positions. And I know those positions are definitely aimed at the strategic objective of growth of students and the professional development of teachers both. But can you explain how those positions, they're not going to, I imagine they're not going to work in silos. So how are they going to work together? Because a lot of that, you mentioned, you know, exploring, looking at data and best practices and how to move forward and make, make the Rockport schools more competitive. So how do you envision those positions working together with teachers and with the administrators?
So the special ed facilitator positions, we have a director of student services in Rockport. We don't have a director of special education. So that position covers a lot of roles, not just director of special education. Some districts have an assistant director of special education, where they have a student services guidance person and someone in charge of special ed at the district level. Because ours is one directorship that covers a lot of those areas, that special ed facilitator position will really act as kind of the right and left hand of the, of that student service position at the building level so that there's some true administrative leadership in that department to make someone more accessible, to make someone be able to be there in a more timely manner, to be able to really get to know the kids in a way that maybe a central office administrator can't get to know the child all the time and the needs of families. So we really feel like that's an important one, and they'll be working directly with special educators and paraprofessionals regularly.
Day-to-day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then how about the instructional coach?
So the instructional, yep.
And then the curriculum.
Yep. So the instructional coach is really intended to be a partner for teachers, someone who can go into data meetings, someone who can go into PLCs, take a look at what the needs of our students are, take a look at the professional development goals that we have, what instructional strategies are we working on to meet the diverse needs of learners. If we're implementing new curriculum, someone who can really take a deep dive into how to implement that from an instructional standpoint, or even just to navigate the, the materials themselves, and then coach teachers either in the classroom authentically, in a job-embedded way, or during those planning meetings. And it, in theory, it all connects back to students by name. So again, it's, it's, it's taking someone from, from the rank and file right out of the classroom who we, we can identify as someone who we think could be a great leader and really has this together kind of in their repertoire and really support their colleagues shoulder to shoulder in this work.
Yeah. So a lot of that, a lot of that work right now, I imagine, is happening on professional development days just by teachers or team leaders doing that work. And I know with a lot of assessments and benchmarking that students are doing, that's a lot of data there, and
And there's an MTSS.
It takes time, it takes effort, and it takes a lot of work to sift through that.
Yeah, and we're, we're about to embark on an MTSS steering committee at the elementary school, too. And I, again, that's going to be, that's going to be someone who can sit and, and sort through data and be, be a partner with teachers around how we're implementing instructional practices and meeting needs of kids. The director of teaching and learning position, it depends on the district, right? In most cases, it's, it's a director of curriculum instruction and assessment. This is someone to help us guide through our curriculum review process, make sure we're, there's a fidelity of implementation around our district, agreed-upon resources and secondary resources, someone to partner with myself and the director of professional development around that work, someone, again, to look more at grants related to teaching and learning and the implementation and adoption of curriculum work. So that's, that's a, that's, that's going to be a pretty valuable position up there.
Other school committee questions before we open it up to the public? All right, so
Sorry, I have one more. I thought you were going to go, Amy. Do you have one? A question about the enrollment. I know we've talked in the past about doing either interviews with families of, with students that are either school choicing out or other placements. Has that really happened yet or not yet, or is that a plan to happen in the next coming year or near future?
So I'm going to say it hasn't happened. We've talked about it quite a bit. I feel like we talked about it when I first came here, too. I think we have to put some kind of mechanism in place that makes it easy for families because most people, if they're, if they're taking their child and the child's going to St. John's, the child's going to St. John's, they're not really fully invested in having a conversation with us about the why. We're starting to understand the why as we pay attention to kids. Some families are legacy families. Grandfather went to that school, mother or father went to that school, next kid was preordained to go to that school. Others, they've left for programming, for athletics. I'd like to do a better job, whether that's through some Google survey tool or something that we put so when the child has kind of their exit ticket or their unenrollment information, we can send that out. So I do think we need to make that a higher priority.
Because I wonder if, if some of it's programming, if we're addressing those programming needs, you know, Project Lead the Way, I imagine, is a, a good step towards that.
Yep.
Is that something the school committee would maybe help address in a, in a, in subcommittee starting next year, or is that more something just a year?
I just think we have to do it, quite honestly. You know, when you talk about programming, we've had great meetings with high school leadership and teacher leaders about business classes and finance classes, too. DESI and the state are coming out with a big push to try to make a high school graduation requirement that every student has taken a personal finance class before they've gotten out of high school. So we've had the math department and the history department together already to start talking about what, some more robust and competitive-style business classes and finance classes could look like at the high school. So if we start to get those courses together, authentic math, authentic business courses, as someone who has a kid who's about to go off and study political science and economics, I value those courses just as much as I do the fine arts courses and just as much as I do our math and science courses, too. So when you look at programming, I think it is important to understand why kids are staying and why kids are leaving.
Okay, so if you'd like to make a public comment, because you have to come up to this table, push the magic button to turn the red light to green. Sarah, do you want to go first?
I just have a question.
You can't be heard unless you come up to the table and push the button. Nice try, though.
At least by those at home.
I should know this. Sarah Wilkinson, chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen, 23 Ivy Road. I just have a question. So how can we access the, the budget?
It's on the website.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, under news, it scrolls right by with the
The new one has to be approved first, and then tomorrow it'll be on the website.
So this, this one, though, is on, this version is on the website right now.
Oh, the draft version?
Just so that it's
Okay. Perfect.
It was publicly available in the superintendent's office Thursday through
Perfect. Okay.
With hard copies, but it's on there right now.
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay, well, Carl, we'll see you in a second.
Stacy Twombly, elementary reading specialist. I am also co-president of the RTA, and I am with Joanne Hildreth, the other president of the RTA, and we just have a statement that we would like to read. At the last meeting, Mark Lorenz asked Mark Branco how the proposed budget will make the lives of teachers better. RTA and RESA would like to address that question in a joint statement. The morale among those of us in student-facing roles at all three schools is at a low. We are scared and frustrated. As one member put it, "We feel as though we are dying by 1,000 cuts." Teachers without seniority are wondering when, not if, they will be cut. Teachers with more sore seniority are wondering what our future jobs will look like. Will we have large class sizes or increased caseloads? Will we be teaching new or additional courses or grade levels that we may not have experienced teaching? We have lost our sense of belonging as a system, as experts in our curriculum and at our school level. We recognize that the amount of staff exceeds the needs to deliver high-quality instruction based on the declining enrollment. We also agree that some of the changes made last year, such as the addition of the BCBA, and some this year, such as a math acceleration specialist at the middle high school, are welcome and needed additions. We also appreciate the increase of STEM classes at the middle and high school. With that said, we are asking the following. First, we ask that there are no administrative positions, no additional administrative positions until there is data to support that the current administration at the building levels require additional support. The current building-based administration has high expectations for themselves and for the staff. Many of them, however, have only had their positions for a semester to a half, a year and a half. Let's give them time to follow through with the endeavors that they have already begun before making more changes. We also ask that the focus of money allotment and resources go toward forward-facing positions, student-facing positions. Third, we ask for more collaboration. We have dozens of experts in the district in a range of educational subjects. We would like a voice, not just a seat at the table for decisions such as curriculum instruction, assessment, and scheduling. We do not currently feel like our creativity and innovation are being utilized. We would like to recognize that the budget book put together by Mark last year was very impressive and detailed. This year, we hope for increased transparency in budgetary additions as well as reductions. Where exactly is the money coming from, and where is it going? Finally, we recognize the declining enrollment Finally, we recognize the declining enrollment, but are also, we also recognize that Rockport has a very difficult time attracting staff members due to our geographic isolation as well as our comparatively low salaries. We would like to see a budget that is trying to right-size both, not prioritize one over the other. Thank you.
Carl, did you, you had your hand up before, so.
So I just wanted some clarification. Some clarification on the, on the early retirement. I saw, was that a budget of $60,000, $12,000 per employee if they all go? And I saw there was one that had accepted. So if all five go, will there be enough money in there to save a position or?
No, it's already closed. It was, it was five positions at 15.
Okay.
And it was open until February 1st.
Okay.
To help us try to make some decisions and to have it all done before the budget was settled.
So that won't make a difference in how you move forward?
No.
Okay. And the choice numbers were down. Was that right? Is that, so you're down a couple hundred thousand?
So this is where we have to talk out of both sides, quite honestly. We continue to maintain around 24 and a half to 25% of our enrollment is school choice. But we also have gone over time from 1,100 kids to under 700 kids. Right? So 25% of that number is much less. So we have less school choice children.
Got it.
But the same percentage of kids is coming to Rockport. Everybody around us, the entire Commonwealth, has declining enrollment. So it's a statewide, national issue with just people having less kids, in particularly New England, certain parts of New England are super expensive to raise kids and move into.
I got that.
So, so we are, the reason that number goes down is because they're, per head, there are less kids.
Okay. I guess that's it. Dwight, do you have anything? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the green light's already on. On directions, Amanda. No, no, it's good.
Beth, shut this one off for me, just so it doesn't feed back.
So I'm not in stereo. Thank you for letting me ask a question. I'm just going to read what I wrote and hopefully get the gist of what I'm trying to say. So the first thing I wanted to say was, and you kind of referenced this before, that during the pandemic, we were, there was a grant that offered additional support. So in 2021, 2022, a COVID grant went into effect that resulted in the hiring of two math accelerated, acceleration people and an additional reading as well. Each of these hires had full caseloads and played an important role in helping bridge any gaps that occurred throughout the pandemic. In 2022, 2023, the grant ended and we returned back to two reading specialists and one math interventionist. Over those two years, we have seen huge progress with the students that have worked with our current reading specialist and our current math interventionist. However, the amount of students receiving math support is already at full capacity. Most days, she gives up her planning periods and her even lunches despite what her union rep tells her. With the class sizes increasing in grades one through five, is the district considering hiring an additional acceleration math person to better support the larger classes? And if so, will they require the same math license that our current person has and experience? And not just kind of misplacing a teacher into that role that's not her, you know, forte? So that that person can help not only the students with remediation, but to also advance the population we have as well? So that's question one. Question two. And I read this in the Gloucester Daily Times and Mr. Branco, Dr. Branco just, he reiterated it. With the increases in both the non-consortium and the consortium out of district placement tuitions are one of the, as one of the major drivers behind current budget, the current budget crisis? My question is, what does our district's plan to help meet the needs of students requiring substantially separate environments so we can reduce the number of students needing to leave our district? Specifically, in 2013, RES offered a substantially separate setting where that special educator actually worked with classroom teachers to integrate the child when, when it was best, but not expecting the child to be in the classroom for majority of the day. Hold on. To better, to better suit the needs of that child? Will Rockport return to this model and consider a K to two and a three to five special education class that other districts currently offer so we can stop sending our students to programs out of town? It seems like the cost of two special education teachers to run this type of program would cost less than the student tuitions we are currently paying to outsource Rockport students. And I would say that staffing people for the kids versus coaching adults who have coaches, we have the reading specialists who've coached us, the math specialists, they constantly are pushing the data and helping us to interpret it and using Arcadians and all of these techniques. They come to our PLC meetings. We have a lot of coaching. We need the help with the children in the classroom. And I do think the class size is going to be over in the fourth grade. Thank you.
I'm Ann Clifton, grade four teacher. It's been my privilege to be a grade four teacher in Rockport for the past 27 years. I have nothing prepared, but I have something to, I guess, just say. You mentioned, so there will be two fourth grade teachers next year, which we have this year, but this year we have 36 students. So we'll have 47 students coming in next year. And yes, you're right, it could change one or two. It always does. So we're looking at class sizes of 23 and 24. That is a little bit higher than what the school committee does recommend, at least according to my notes. And I'm just wondering if, you know, the decision-making around choosing to use a teacher to be an instructional coach and work with teachers when it seems like, to me, it's more important to have a smaller ratio of teacher to student in the classroom? And I think there's data that supports that as well. So I guess I'm just wondering about really how, how necessary that instructor coach is and really if that's where you're going to see most, more students benefit. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Sam. Phil?
Hi. I don't have anything planned, didn't expect to speak, but a little intimidating that you're my bosses, but also part of the community. Oh, sorry, Phil Whitley, the other half of the fourth grade team. But I've also populated half the town. I have four kids here. This is my 13th year teaching, 10th year coaching in town, and my wife works here as a physical therapist. We're deeply entrenched in Rockport. My biggest fear is that our school has lost its way or its identity. And obviously, COVID certainly hurt things. But when I came here 13 years ago, we had one principal, we had one counselor, and the spirit of the school was different. And I can't put my finger on it, and I'm not blaming anybody. But I, you know, I care about the student athletes, being a coach, I care about my second grader, my junior, my eighth grader, my sixth grader, and the fourth graders that sit in front of me every day. And I know that you guys deeply care about what you do or you wouldn't spend your time here in these awesome meetings every week. But I think it's important to look at the 47 kids in the third grade. And I noticed fifth grade this year has 50 in there in three, three classes. To put 47 into two classes and to put six or seven more desks in my room this year, and I'm not saying this from a, from a selfish standpoint, and I say it as a teacher and meeting students' needs. It's going to, is it doable? Absolutely, absolutely. Is it what's probably best for the students? I'm not sure. And I know things are tight. I work four jobs. I drive a 2005 Honda Pilot with 170,000 miles, just hit it on the way here from the Cove. But I do it so that I can live in this neat community and take care of my family and be a part of it. But I, I ask you guys, there's, there's a lot of work that has to go into figuring out how young families can move here and to thrive here. And that's a big problem. Because if I sell my house, I can't live here anymore. I'm going to have a lot of money, but I gotta, I gotta find somewhere else to live. You know, and we're, and we're looking at trying to fix a lot of things and teacher coaches and all that stuff is nice. I'm not sure it's what the district needs right now. Bigger districts and things with other pressing needs. And I've always thought that Rockport has a really unique setting and experience because we are so small. You know, most high school districts have no clue who their elementary teachers are. And I get to work with them every single day and see them and interact with them. And they get to email me about what my kids are doing in their classes and funny things that happened, and that's a real blessing. And I think we need to tap into that. We need to, we need to get back to the roots of what Rockport was, and it's not putting 47 kids in two classrooms. People don't send their kids to a small school or move here to have, you know, 24, 23 kids in a fourth grade classroom. They do it to have 16 in a room and to be loved deeply by that teacher and known by that teacher. And I know the budget's tight, I get it. You know, I paid like 400 bucks for three things of, three bags of groceries the other day, I get it. But if we lose sight of what we used to be and why this town was really special, I think we're doing ourselves and our students a real disservice and makes it less desirable to be here. And I get it, I see the numbers. I was looking at numbers the other day just based on who Rockport basketball is beating right now, which is pretty exciting. And most of the North Reading, they have 100 something in each class, and we're down to 50, 60. And that's, I don't say that as a knock on Rockport, I say that as something special that we need to tap into and figure out what can draw people here to use that unique thing that we do have in this amazing place. So, thank you.
Others?
Hello, my name is Caroline Teague. I have the privilege of being the sixth grade math teacher here at Rockport. Dr. Branco, I had a question for you. I've heard many times you reference the phrase "right sizing," that we want to right-size, not downsize. Because my understanding of it is that downsizing is meeting the needs of, needs of the budget, whereas right sizing is finding what is right for this school. So I would just love to hear more from you about what you see as the right size for Rockport. What do you see as the right size for our students? What do you see as the right size for our faculty? Where do you see that right size going? Thank you.
Sorry, there was, go ahead, Toby, go ahead.
Did I press that?
You do.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Techno Dolt, I am Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I speak at the annual town meetings, asking questions about the sped expenses. I wrote to the school committee and superintendent, January 23rd, a letter. I've been told I'll get answers. Many of the answers are doubtless in your budget presentation, and a few have been touched on. I'll read the letter. What is the cost per student to operate the Rockport schools? How is this figure calculated? Is it a fraction of the some town meeting appropriates? Or is it a fraction of that appropriation plus all the other funds the schools get? State aid, grants, circuit breaker, et cetera? The figures for the past few years would be helpful for context. How much does a school get for each choice child who comes here? What percent of the school's budget is spent on special education? Sped, in parentheses. Please state the figures for the past three years. We may see a trend. How are these figures calculated? Are they a percent of what the town meeting appropriates for the schools in Articles Five and Six and the sped stabilization account? Or are the figures a percent of the total school budget, including the grant, state aid, circuit breaker, et cetera? Are the additional expenses over and above the choice reimbursement covered by the communities that send them here? Who pays for the transportation in these cases? I'm aware that the state's circuit breaker reimbursement is a year delayed after the expenses are incurred. Applying the latest figures available, is the state meeting its legal obligations on the reimbursement? Is the state now covering any part of the sped transportation costs? If yes, what percent? What is the title? Excuse me. The school pays someone to mediate, cope with the demands of sped parents. What is the title of this person? What is the salary? Has this figure been included in the calculations of the total sped expenses? It certainly should be included. It is a matter of opinion whether the sped programs are 100% justified or a fantastic boondoggle or something in between. Certainly, these enormous expenses are not the fault of the sped children, their parents, the school committee, or the superintendent. These expenses, the perennial bane of the school's budget, are entirely the fault of the state, which orders the town to produce these programs but does not pay for them, an unfunded mandate. The town meeting annually votes the funds to operate the school's almost half of the town's budget. In return, you need to do all you can to safeguard the financial interests of the town's voters. I request that you draft and offer to the 2024 annual town meeting a resolution calling on our representatives and the legislature to pay for all, underlined, the sped expenses. And I hope you don't see those questions as hostile. I certainly don't intend them so. I wish you well. I think people generally do, whether or not they have children. I don't. I also had a few other things to bring forward about the capital expenses because I attend the meetings of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, I think the only plain citizen who bothers, too. And last week, they were talking about your school budget, and among the things that were spoken of were tables, replacement tables for 30 some, I don't have the figures, 30 some odd thousand dollars. And it was said that the tables were now in sad shape. They were not usable. Well, questions should have been asked. How old were the tables? Are they defective because they were bad goods to begin with? Or have they been abused or vandalized? If you're going to order new ones, how would you know that those were good goods as opposed to just whoever bid cheapest? And I guess, you know, I felt that the proper questions weren't asked about the tables. There was a very large sum for air circulation systems for the buildings to purify the air. And certainly, that's a legitimate expense and ought to be funded. But it's rather odd that you'd be clearing the air on the one hand and buying the carpets on the others. And I don't know anything about, you know, how much you'd spend on the carpets. It was a lot more than tables and a lot less than air circulation. And most people, I think, would be aware that carpets now, like what's underfoot here, are made of synthetic fibers, they're not natural fibers, and they emit gases, fumes, particularly when they're new. And particularly in enclosed buildings, they're a health hazard. So does anyone know about the carpets? You put things out to bid, I don't know what further purchase you have upon it. But if you don't know for certain, you know, what you're getting on the carpets, I think you need to turn to somebody who does know, perhaps the Board of Health. You don't want to spend a lot of money on something that is going to be, over the course of years, poisonous when you're also spending money to clear the air. I guess that's all.
Thank you, Toby. There was a hand in the far back? Yes, there's that same hand. Do you want to come up front?
Just turn it on. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Megan Shelton, 163 Main Street. I have populated the other half of Rockport Public Schools with my four children. I am speaking on behalf of my third grader, who is one of those 47 children. Um, I am speaking on behalf of my third grader, who is one of those 47 children. Uh, we have had the privilege and joy of both Mr. Whitley's class and Ms. Anne Clifton's class, and I know that they are capable of running classrooms of 40 children. But my David, who was a COVID kindergartner and a masked first grader, deserves better. And as a public educator, I hope that you will sincerely consider a coach versus a classroom teacher FaceTime with those kids in real life. Thank you.
Amy Huber. I'm a math teacher at the high school and at One Gaphead Road. Um, although I have not, um, I don't have a lot of seniority at the school, I've only worked here eight years. I do want to say that my morale is very high as a teacher here. I love teaching at the high school. I love the challenge every year of getting a new group through with all the different things that happen. Um, I don't feel like I have a thousand cuts um happening to me every day. I, I feel really positive, especially about where the school is moving to me, especially over the last two years. I'm very happy about the new mission, where the very top thing is high expectations. That's my main mantra, is to bring the students up to me, not sinking down. I don't mean sinking down if they need help, of obviously I'm gonna help them, but I want them to aim higher for themselves because I know they can do it. So I just wanted to say that I'm not unhappy at all here. I'm very happy that the RTA is working for me, so I don't want anyone in the RTA to be mad at me. But I do want to say that my morale is very high. I feel very good about the school, where it's going, and I think that the actions that you're suggesting are basically the things that we need to do to keep our schools open, which I think is the most important thing for our community, is to have a public school. Thank you.
Other?
Hi, Rick Droste, 12 Parody Circle. Um, with my four children, I guess I deal with the other half, or the third half of the town of Rockport. I guess you have to have four children to be able to speak. I'm not sure.
How competitive this thing was.
I have a dog too. So, um, at some point, if you could answer a simple question, what is the current head count under the Rockport school system this year versus the current head count next year versus where you think the head count will go as we quote-unquote "right-size"?
Yeah.
And thank you.
There is a lot of data in the back of the book showing projections for the region, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other? I'm not seeing any other hands.
Um, Sarah Wilkinson again. So I wasn't prepared to speak because I'm already preparing for our budget meeting next week, where we have to deal with all the department budgets. And um, I want to thank you guys. This isn't easy, this isn't easy for any, any town department. We're all doing the same thing. There's, it's, there's one pot of money, right, for everyone. And it's, it's hard, and I understand, but I just want to speak as a parent for a second. Um, and if you can go to, if you, you don't mind going to page 15, I think you already presented on it. But, and, and I want to thank Mark because, and I loved Rob, and I had a great relationship with Rob, but a lot of this stuff, I feel like Rob should have started a few years ago, but unfortunately COVID hit, and it, it didn't get started, so we're having to deal with a lot more of it now. But I personally, um, I went to private school, my siblings went to private school, we lived in Rockport, and my, my younger sisters went to Rockport, and they had a much better, I, I don't want to say like a much better upbringing, because they didn't, and you know, my mom may watch this, and I'll still, I still have guilt over it. But um, because my parents worked, you know, a million jobs, but um, Greg and I have, and we only have two kids, so maybe I shouldn't even be speaking. But um, my boys like desperately want to be Vikings, and we desperately want them to go to school here, and we desperately want them to get the education that we all want to give to the kids. But I see, like, I see cuts, and I see, you know, and I'm, and I, and I see what's happening, and I hear that morale is low, I hear, and, and it's a struggle all around. So I'm kind of thinking, sitting here thinking like, solutions, solutions, how do we move forward, right? Because that's, that's like our job as elected officials. And I look at the number, if you scroll down a little bit, of homeschool, Essex Tech, Teca, and private schools, and that number totals 76 kids. Where if we could find a way to get like half of those kids to stay here, we're looking at 30 something kids, which is a class that I have. So I'm kind of thinking to myself, I think we as a community need to commit to figuring out, and I agree, once they're gone, they're gone, but talking to people throughout the year, and I'm willing to help. I think it's on us in the school committee, I think the teachers and administrators do enough, but we need to figure out, like, in sixth grade, are kids gonna be here for high school? In ninth grade, do they want to graduate from here? Because if they don't, we need to figure out why, and if there are things we can do. Like, you know, somebody said to me tonight, I heard that they're gonna cut hockey. So I'm like, I don't think so, I actually saw a note about ice time in the budget. So, so I'm kind of like, I think hockey's probably okay. But that's one of those things, like, if there's a rumor around town that they're gonna cut hockey, we need to like nip that in the bud and deal with it ASAP, because we, you know, it's a small town, we all talk, like, and I just want to like be totally open and upfront, and because I think those of us who have committed to sending our kids here want to do it, but, but you know, it's not gonna work if we keep losing 50 kids a year. It's just not. So we need to like all have an open discussion about how to try to get some of those kids here. And I think this year, because I'm a data geek, I think we have 673 kids in the system this year, which actually is outperforming the projections that we got from the independent study we had done last year. So that was kind of exciting to me. But if we're already outperforming, like yay, let's figure out why and how to keep outperforming it. But I think this is like a community effort, and I know we have reps from the finance committee here tonight, and they're committed too, to like having a school system here, but it's gonna take all of us. Thanks.
Other comments? Oh, yep. Sharon?
Doing the microphone right? I'm doing, doing well. Um, so first of all, I am happy to, that people are voicing um their opinion, both for, against, whatever. I think that's awesome. Um, I have some questions that come from others, but I'm going to read them. Now that I've figured out the microphone. So I have three questions. The first one is, uh, the two staff members that are currently acting as team chair have only been at this position for this current school year. They are both strong leaders, and as team chair and joint coordinators, they are leading their departments. Is the decision to remove them from the union and make them administrators based on historic needs or current needs? Why not try this current arrangement for longer than a semester, and then see if changes are necessary in the future? Similarly, is it necessary to remove these two positions from the union and make them an administration for the purpose of allocating of funds? We have five very capable building-level administrators and a director of student services who can attend these meetings when necessary. With six administrators who could fulfill that duty, do we need one and a half more? The third question is, according to the proposed budget overview, the district total increase is 32%, while RTA, RES, RMHS sped totals decrease by 6%. The 32% or 108,596 increased district positions are funded through RTA reductions. I ask the school committee to elaborate on the proposed restructuring of administrative district leadership team director of teaching and learning's position.
Other comments? Oh, yes, sorry, didn't see you.
Hi there. Hi there, Connor Carrington-House. I'm a student. Uh, I'm a senior at Rockport. And I was just, I was listening in earlier in the meeting, and I heard that um, the general sort of perspective is that even given the staff cuts uh in the high school recently, that it had been working fine. Um, and I just want to bring up that that's not necessarily the case. We have been, we have been struggling with, with programming in the English department, and I don't see that changing, uh, particularly anytime soon. Uh, especially with, um, if we're looking long-term with the uh growing numbers in the lower schools. I don't have the numbers to back that up, but um, I do believe that that's somewhere where uh is worth looking. Uh, and just wanted to bring that to the uh consciousness of everyone. Thank you.
Thanks Connor. Oh, Beth, too.
Beth's early, I don't think so, my lane last time. I work at the elementary school. Um, I just wanted to, just since I can ask one more question, I'm going to. Um, and it kind of addresses the issue of morale. Um, at the elementary school, we have many new curriculums that we have recently adopted, which is great, I actually like curriculum. Um, and it's exciting, but one of the things that I ask um the school committee, why it was decided to um take away the teachers' clerks at the buildings? Because that was a, a real, it's become a real stressor for the teachers. Um, because we are all learning all of this new stuff, and that takes hours and hours and hours that we're working on doing, and we meet constantly as a team. And now, in addition to that, we don't have a clerk to actually help prepare some of the materials ahead for us. And so that's also spending hours and hours, taking turns, being the copy person, um, and prepping it all. And so it was just, it felt like bad timing to lose the clerk. I had, the clerk, I, I think they were always there, I don't know, they were there all my ten years. Um, and so that was kind of a, a morale kill, like, for the elementary school teachers, I'll speak just for them. Thank you.
Other comments? Trying to go all the way around this time. Well, this is public right now. Yep. Okay, go ahead Eric.
Um, I did want to mention the RIS instructional coach one more time. I know that, given the recent cuts to the elementary school teaching staff, there have been, a lot of the teachers currently there are more longstanding, not necessarily like 10-plus years of, uh, like, have been, they haven't been necessarily teaching for 10-plus years, but they have been teaching for a long, a longer period of time than are a lot of brand-new teachers coming into school. So is it necessarily necessary to have, uh, an instructional coach should be helping with, uh, like professional development of the teachers on like a day-to-day basis when teachers aren't necessarily brand-new to the positions or to the teaching workforce as a general?
Thank you. Any last comments? So, I, I want to do a couple of things here. I had mentioned before that we might not stop and answer every question, and I think you can see why. Um, particularly with Toby's, there are so many questions, we could be here till tomorrow, they're all valid. All of the comments are valid. I want to assure you that we've heard you, we take it seriously. I can tell you from my own personal experience, being at a company for 25 years that had five different acquisitions, as people started to change things, typically tidal waves of consultants, everyone felt the anxiety of not knowing what it's gonna look like. Everyone had the same feeling of no one understands, no one cares, I don't need help. I really get it. For us, as a school committee, one of the things we have to take into account is, it's not just about Dr. Branco. He's working with a team that's been here in some cases for a very long time, who we have to assume is also talking with the teaching staff that they administer. So for us, it can be difficult to evaluate. Clearly, sure, whenever there's gonna be a, a reduction in staff, that's a morale buster. But we also have to balance against that. Our last override passed by eight votes. Our student population in the last 10 years has dropped by 29%. So we talk about, uh, someone handed me, as I walked in, a, a part of the budget saying, look, there's been a 6% decrease in student-facing services. Well, there's been a 29% decrease in students. So there's no happy way, I think, for everyone to go through this process, but what I can reassure you on is that everyone involved in it has taken it very seriously. They don't, they don't take it lightly, whether it's a clerk, or whether it's a senior position in terms of eliminating it, but at, at some level, we have to be responsible for ensuring that we have a viable school district for everybody, and the focus is never on just the money, it's on the quality of the student experience. So I think for the school committee, part of what we have to consider is, is there enough information, evidence, to attempt to override our primary employee? Which means we're assuming that he's incapable of carrying out um the senior position of administrative um procedure in the school. And speaking for myself, I, I understand all the pain. I'm not sure it rises to overriding um voting for a proposal that we've been discussing for months. So I don't know how the other committee members feel. I don't think we're gonna be able to answer all of the questions that we got tonight here. I have been writing them down, we will follow up, we want to make sure that there's a clear path of communication. If people genuinely feel they're not heard, which is different from not agreed with, we want to make sure that they are heard. But um, my question for the committee is, do you feel like you've heard enough to actually take a vote on the proposed budget?
I do.
Okay. So. Yeah, before we go any further with that, I just, I just want to thank the, the parents and teachers who came out and spoke. I think a lot of really um great viewpoints were expressed, and, and it, you know, as I look at this, I'm concerned as well, and, you know, one of my questions earlier was about that instructional coach, and superintendent explained that that position, part of that position was co-teaching in boots-on-the-ground, you know, in the classrooms, and I know that was a big concern expressed tonight. And so, you know, looking into the details of some of this, I think, helps um with, with the plan going forward. Um, while it's different, it's, you know, maybe, my hope is that it's, you know, another, my hope is that it's right sizing, and that was another question, I, what does that really mean? To me, it means moving the district forward, raising achievements, keeping us competitive. And by doing that, I think it helps with our enrollment, and it ties, I think, all of this together, it's all a spiral, right? And, and all of these concerns, I think, are moving us forward. It's difficult, but I think when you look at it from a, kind of a bird's-eye perspective, I think that's how I have to look at it, and by doing so, I, I would be ready to vote. Okay, so not hearing, I don't know if you, sorry. I'm not hearing a no, I don't have enough to.
I just wanted to echo what Mark said and thank all the teachers and parents that came to speak tonight. Most of us on the committee are current parents or have been in the Rockport schools, and we're all residents of Rockport. We all take this very seriously, and I think um, voting on a budget in any year, it's amazing to have all of these people here, all, all these people engaged. This isn't necessarily what's been typical in my eight years on the committee, and I'm, I'm thrilled to hear all of these things, because I think regardless of, of voting on it, continuing to ask ourselves these questions, particularly those of us who are not educators, so continuing to ask and reflect on all of these different questions, um, and what's been presented here is very, very valuable, and I can assure you that we are all doing that.
Okay, well, that being the case, I'm gonna ask if there's a motion to approve a fiscal year 25 budget for the school department of $16,97185 with the request to the town of $14,329,581.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for. Thank you all for participating. You're not obligated to stay here. You're welcome to stay, but understand. So approval of minutes from January 17th, only Mark, Nicole, and I can vote on that because we're the only ones here. Any corrections or amendments? Nope. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 17th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Eric, that goes to you as the student advisory rep.
All right, so this, this meeting, we're a little light on the updates due to upcoming. We're a little light on the updates this time around due to upcoming school break. So there aren't a ton of things going forward. But the elementary school has recently had an in-house field trip hosted by Salem Sound Coast Watch. The Rockport Public Schools annual art show is going to be taking place from February 28th to March 10th. In the middle school, we have the STEM workshop series led by Anna Droste and Ms. Vazza continues to run. It's been very successful. A lot of positive feedback from students. And the Cape and Youth Lacrosse Restoration is now open to the public as well. In the high school, we have Thursday, February 8th, at 6:15 PM, is senior night for the boys' basketball and for the cheer team in the gym. So anyone who'd like to attend is more than welcome. All of our winter sports teams have qualified for the state tournament, as was mentioned earlier, which is great. I think it may have possibly been the first time it's ever happened. Seniors are running a, the senior class is running a February calendar raffle with different prizes each day, which are, which we pick daily. So if you get in touch with the school, we will provide tickets to anyone who's interested. Spear Week for the high school starts next week, which I know all of us are looking forward to. And February break starts after that, starting on 17th, with a half-day on Friday the 16th.
Thank you, Eric. That was great. We have one donation in the drive.
So I feel like every other week, we come together and celebrate the incredible philanthropic side of this community. So once again, we have Kathy and Tim Riley to thank for donating one Eastman VL100 violin to the music department. That is, it is no small thing. I have friends who say, oh, my God, I got like seven instruments up in my attic because my son played trumpet. My daughter played violin, flute, and clarinet, and quit them all.